So if you have signed up to comment. First on the list, I have Mr. Sonny Austin.
I guess everybody here knows me. I'm Sonny Austin. I'm chief of Creek Fire Department and also Moxon Volunteer Fire Department. Um, and Mr. Lester talked a little bit about some water tanks for the Moxon building down there. I sort of want to know how that was coming along. If, uh, if the tanks had been ordered or...
The tanks have been ordered, sir. Yes, they have.
All right. Another thing I wanted to talk to you about was, uh, we've got a landing zone in Copper Creek. And it's really hard to get a gurney through and grab one. I'd like to see if we can get some help putting some concrete in. Uh, like probably twenty by twenty with a sidewalk coming off of it where we roll up, gurney up to the helicopter. But it's, it's really hard on patients, all that bouncing and stuff. And we've got the, only thing I do is form it up, put the concrete down. Everything else is ready. And I'd like to put a, uh, landing zone on Moxon. We talked, and, Mr. Lester talked about that, uh, maybe putting it over about where the landfill was at or dumpster was at in that field. Cause the county already owns it. We don't have to have no rideaways or nothing. It wouldn't, it wouldn't take a lot to put one in there because it's, it's pretty much got some good level spots. That's all I've got.
Well, thank you, Sonny. And, and one of the things that, before the meeting, we was talking about ladder trucks. Well, one of the other things that we're trying to implement is LTZs, those landing zones. Right now in Russell County, to be able to tram out, if you're on the backside, either Honaker or New Garden, Daint or Cleveland, it's hard to get a patient out in a trauma, either a heart attack or a wreck or something this. So we're looking at LTZs around the county. That way they got a fifteen minute tram time to be able to fly in and fly out quickly. That way we're within fifteen minutes of an LTZ at any time. Uh, we're also working with the Honaker side at the Rose Dale, and we're also looking at, at, at the Swords Creek area too, to be able to get in the backside of the county to be able, if an emergency occurs, that way we can have LTZs in place where they can fly in and fly out quickly and not have to tram an hour, an hour and a half, depending upon the trauma in Bristol or Johnson City. So we're looking at that concept. So.
Thank you. Good deal. Um, next on our list, I have a Mr. Hugh O'Donnell.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I also have some materials. It was, it was hard to read the sounds back there. But the material is perfect. I hope that didn't carry against my three minutes.
It did not. It did not.
Uh, I'm here on behalf of some friends of mine that I'm also sort of representing in that she has a legal problem. And this year is my fiftieth year as a lawyer. Which is one of the dates that we want to talk about, nineteen seventy-three. My clients run the El Palenque Restaurant in Castlewood. And, um, approximately a month ago, somebody from the board of alcoholic whatever showed up and told them that they were in violation of an ordinance concerning selling beer or, and wine on Sunday. And he immediately, they immediately complied with what they were told. Uh, I, uh, my wife and I, um, frequently go to their restaurant and like it. It's a very popular restaurant in St., in St. Paul, Castlewood. It's one. And, uh, it's a family restaurant. And, um, anyway, the documents I gave you, I mentioned seventy-three is my fiftieth year as a lawyer. This ordinance that my clients have implemented, um, was passed two years before I was born. I was, uh, I was in vitro, as it were. I was born in January of forty-six. This was passed in November of forty-five. A lot of things have changed since then. Forty, that, that year was only thirteen years away from ending of prohibition. Anyway, this restaurant has been in existence by with this management for fourteen years. It's a well-established institution. But the problem that has occurred is not being able to sell any beer or wine or, and their license to sell that, of course. Not being able to do that on Saturday after, Sunday afternoon has caused a real dent in their, um, income. And it's important to note that the money that they make as a restaurant, a significant portion goes every month to Russell County. This has hurt their business. The, the beer they serve is Mexican beer, but other kinds of beer. And, uh, it's a popular place and a popular, uh, institution. And the people are, um, just hardworking people. And it's a family operation. It's basically owned by two sisters. And one of the other, the gentleman who manages it is the husband of one of those sisters. And in their fourteen years of operation, they've never had to call the police about one, anything. And, you know, tourism is important, but it's also important to try to support the, the institutions that are there. And this institution needs your support. In those documents I gave you, um, there is a document from nineteen seventy-three where this board of supervisors added an amendment. And I don't think anybody here is around. I mean, maybe Ms. Mayberry might be, know about it. But what they did was they created an exemption for private clubs. And the private, now I'm old enough to remember, uh, the Vegas Club. Cause I came in nineteen eighty and I think it was still going. I think there is another club that was around. And, um, in terms of beer and wine, they did sell it because of that exemption. There is a statute, there are statutes in, in effect in Virginia that had been passed in the nineties that allow boards of supervisors to regulate, um, this situation. And it would all you could do, my, my personal belief is that this ordinance serves no real purpose other than to make things harder for this business, which has the misfortune to be in an unincorporated area. It's, it's a mile away from the St. Paul Police if there's ever any, uh, problems. And I also think this, uh, the sheriff's people eat there, so I run into them. And if you turn to, um, four-one-one-twenty-nine, which is the third document, it talks about local ordinances. The governing body may adopt ordinances, but you can, may adopt effective prohibiting the sale on each Sunday. But it also says that it, and, or fixing hours within such period during which wine or beer of both may be sold. They do not sell anything after ten-thirty on Saturday night because that's when, apparently if you're serving food with, the rules say once the beer, then once you quit, shut down the kitchen, everything else, um, goes to it. So nothing is sold, no beers are sold after ten-thirty. The problem is the Sa- Sunday afternoon crowd is a significant portion of what they're, and it's not people coming to drink, it's people coming to eat and having beer on the side. Mexican food goes well with Mexican beer. I, I know that personally. I'm a big fan of Dos Equis. I saw something the other day that Modelo has the place, um, Bud Light is the leading beer in the night. So anyway, I, I hope, and I'm happy to meet with anybody who wants to meet with it, but this really does need to be addressed. We have, we've lost a restaurant in Castlewood. Pizza Hut closed. I also need to mention that not only is this restaurant affected, but there's a convenience store two or three ways up that is also affected. There's a convenience store in Hansonville that also cannot sell beer on Sunday. There's no, there's no point to it and it hurts people who don't need to be hurt. And I would somehow ask that, I, I understand that you couldn't do that tonight, but I would, I would ask that some study committee or something, I, you know, there's just no reason for it to continue. And it makes a big difference to these people. And it makes a big difference. I think they probably, uh, send three or four thousand dollars a month to Russell County. Uh, they have been, but if you want that, that income stream to continue, then helping them would be a difference. And like I said, the statute says you can fix, fix it. And if you wanted to say beer before twelve is not allowed, I believe they would accept that. That's, you know, that's when people generally, in, in my experience, are in church. There's some church issue, but really, this is not, not really a church issue. I mean, there's no, there's no crime in drinking beer with a meal or wine, for that matter. Anyway, that is the point, and I'm, I'm sure I've used up my three minutes, but, uh, this is really an urgent matter for these people. And they, it sort of came out, out of the blue with this person showing up. And I halfway couldn't believe it. And then I got, I got the actual ordinance and then the, you know, something in nineteen forty-five. I mean, it's weird for me to refer to anything before I was born. I mean, and, uh, it, it really needs, something needs to be done. And I appreciate you giving consideration to that.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Uh, I can, uh, I didn't write my phone number on, but I can, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to. I, I have taken the ordinance. I've given it to the county attorney. I have, um, the updates now. But it just would really help this business.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you.
We appreciate your coming. Thank you. Ms. Patton, I will ask that you, um, have a look see at that and see what or if we can do, um, anything to help the, the restaurant.
Okay, I can, I can report back to the board for
Thank you.
options are for the board to consider at the August meeting.
Appreciate it. Okay. Um, any, anybody else, um, have any comments tonight? I only had those two on the list, so I will entertain anybody else that wants to make a comment. All right, I'll close public comments at this time. Um, we have constitutional officer reports and requests saying none, or does anybody have a report for anybody? Also, moving on to the county attorney reports and requests, that would be you, Ms. Patton.
Yes, Madam Chair. Um, the, um, item that the board added to the agenda was, um, in regards to the petition for the, the writ of a special election. I've, I've passed this statute out, I think, before and I've looked at it. And subsection A, um, at first, upon first glance, it looks like that would have been maybe one we could proceed under and ask, the court to set the special election to be held on the next general election. But, um, when I, when I read that a little bit more carefully, um, that's really sort of, really there's no point because if you, if you follow that section, you're setting the special election on the general election. And so the sheriff is on the ballot this year. This subsection would apply, for instance, if, say that there had been a vacancy in a constitutional office next year when they were not on the ballot. And so the purpose of it, to set it on the general election would just to be able to save money because a special election, um, that has to be held countywide for a constitutional office would cost a great deal of money. So the situation I feel like that we're in, um, at this point, subsection C does not apply because, um, the, um, retirement's already taken effect. But it says if a vacancy in an elected constitutional officer occurs within twelve months immediately preceding the end of the term, that the governing body may petition the circuit court to request that no special, special election be ordered. And, and, um, that the highest ranking, um, person would fill that position. And so, um, the reason I think that you don't do it under subsection A is because then you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have technically an elected person for that whole, that, until the general election. So I think that's why there are two subsections to give that when, um, the vacancy occurs, when that, during that year that the, um, constitutional officer is going to be on the ballot.
Okay, so we basically need a motion to take care of this, um, situation we find ourselves in, right?
Yes, dear, because we're in, in this, you know, after I've read and reread the statute, um, because we are within the twelve months, then unless the board wants there to be a special election at the same time as the general, then, um, you would, you would just say that no special election and just let the general election occur.
Okay, well, um, I'll take chairman's privilege here. I really don't want to spend any extra money and I don't see, I don't see any need to do that, so.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we go with paragraph B of twenty-four point two dash two twenty-eight point one, which says that the governing body may petition the circuit court to request that no special election be ordered. And that it'll just be handled at the general election. Is that correct, Katie?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and that's the petition that I'll file in the circuit court.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Breeding. And, and Ms. Patton. Okay, do you have anything else on your?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we're moving on to the county administrator reports and requests. Mr. Lester, looks like you've got the largest bulk of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the county administrator reports is from the Office of the Comptroller. As, uh, this is the Russell County subs- subs- sub recipients, sorry about that, cares review report. This is a, from the Office of the Comptroller from the Department of Accounts that has confirmed that Russell County did meet during our, our, uh, COVID, our cares review, that we were in compliance with federal and state regulations. So this is, uh, just to say that we confirmed we did what we were supposed to do. We did our due diligence and we did, uh, our, uh, reporting as required. Next on the county administrator reports is again from the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Reports, which is VDAC, which is the state oversight agency for our animal control shelters. And as you can see in the packet, uh, is the last inspection that we just had on June the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, that the only, uh, notation that was cited for us was actually out of three point two sixty-five seventy-five, which is only an administrative code. We, we printed off the forms on the adoption forms and then we had them reprinted and the date got mixed. And so believe it or not, it was just a date line. So, uh, since then it has been corrected and we're, and we're moving on. Next on the county administrator reports is of course, the, um, the VDOT, uh, monthly road system report. As, as you all can read through your package, those are the roads that are, you know, being maintenance, we're coming into the paving system, et cetera, et cetera. Please take a look at that. Next one is a very important. This is, this is the annual one in Russell County that's only has eleven canneries in the whole state of Virginia. So we're getting ready to open up the Castlewood and the Honaker canneries on July the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-three. So the, uh, my staff has tested them. They are moving in to do their last minute cleaning. The boilers have been, and equipment has been tested. Jars have been ordered. We're getting ready to pick them up. Yes, you can.
What about cans?
And cans. And cans.
What about like, I've had a lot of people wanting the, the smaller cans, pints and quarts.
I've got pints. I mean, not pints, but I got quarts, yes. And the, the pints are, but they're very, they're, they actually cost as much as a quart. So I, that's why we chose, we got five thousand quarts. So with lids. So if you run, I think there's like a few sets of variance between the pints and the quarts. So I figured for the bang for the buck, you know, we could, uh, work those numbers out. So. Next on the county administrators is the county ministry request. As, as we had seen at our budget meeting before, the Russell County Recovery, Inc., on the opioid application for twenty-two, twenty-three for twenty-six thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four for a hundred and eleven thousand two hundred, as y'all seen in the application. I'll, I need the formal motion for that grant application for both fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Dye. Thank you, Mr. Breeding. Okay, I have a motion and a second to, um, for the application grant for the opioid. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county ministry request is from the Department of Criminal Justice Services for the, uh, RSO's incentive grant programs. This is grant twenty-four dash two ninety B for two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and ten dollars, uh, and a cent. And then also grant number twenty-four, four twenty-two alpha for two hundred and twenty-two, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eight dollars. I need a, a motion for both, uh, grant A and grant B.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to accept both of those grants, A and B. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is again, uh, another grant, which we have quite a few tonight. This and also is from the Department of Criminal Justice. This is, uh, a ARPA law enforcement equipment grant for four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. For the sheriff's department to purchase equipment with, I need a, a motion and approval for four hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars.
I'll make it.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is another grant on the Wellspring Foundation in southwest Virginia. This is the Dainty Steam Building Renovation Project and the Bernie Williams Workforce Center that, uh, that has been proposed in a partnership between that and the Workforce Development Board. This is a grant from the Wellspring, uh, for a hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. I need a motion and approval on that one. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton and Mr. Christian. Uh, any further discussion on this? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, another grant, Virginia, from the Virginia Coalfield Economic, Economic Development Authority of ACITA grant for twenty-five thousand. This is a, uh, lower, a lower bed lake feasibility study request. And also for the, uh, public notes for requests for proposals for the lower bed lake access development feasibility study for engineering technical consulting services. I need an approval for the twenty-five thousand and release of the request for proposals for the engineering technical.
Some move.
I'll second.
Thank you very much. I have a motion and a second from the committee members that's moving this very fast. Thank you very much. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next one is a, also another grant from the Department of Criminal Justice. This is the victim witness grant for sixty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. I need approval and a motion for that appropriation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second for the vi- victim witness grant of sixty-five one. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the request is for the Marco Mara, the champion of choices. This is for the Russell County School Events for six thousand dollars from the opiate program grant. Uh, I need a motion for the approval under that program, uh, for six thousand dollars.
I'll make it.
Second.
Oh, gosh, I have a motion and a second, a real quick one. And, um, any discussion? I will add that, uh, we did reach out to the opioid folks, um, that we're supposed to, and it met the gold standard. So, um, we're ready to move on that. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next is, uh, as you could see in your packet, this is a partnership that we do with, for the Highlands Juvenile Detention Alternatives Program that we, uh, um, partner with between, uh, Washington County Smith, Lee, Scott, Wise, McKinnon, Dixon, Tasswell and Russell, and the city of Bristol's and city of Norton. As you see, this is a traditional resolution in place that we keep a partnership in place with this program. I need approval for this resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I've got a motion and two seconds. I'll take either one of those. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county ministry request is for a tire shredder, uh, for, uh, from BCA Industries. This is a portable semi tire shredder cutter that we have to do by DEQ and, and code for our tire shredding, uh, our industrial side. I've got a bid here for thirty-six five for the landfill. I need approval for this, uh, sidewalk cutter and shredder.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carl.
I got, I'm gonna take Carl's and I'll take a I got, I'm gonna take Carl's and I'll take a second from Ms. Dye. All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I've got a question. I know that the Waste Management Authority had purchased the Big Red unit that does the tire shredding. And that was supposed to be going from county to county. Is that, is this a secondary unit that we have to purchase?
This is a unit that will maintain the, our landfill with it trimming between three of the Waste Management Authorities, David, you said on the board. We have so many tires between the three counties that you, we can't get our services and they're starting to back up and we're starting to become almost in violation of DEQ regulations, so.
Thanks for that information. I just wanted to know, I knew we had purchased.
We're still got it, but.
Red's still gray.
Big Red's still traveling. But we're getting so many. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this. Yes, absolutely. This is, this is a big dollar saver. This keeps us from trimming it down and paying, you know, the blunt hole landfill. Yes, absolutely.
Can we pass any of this savings back to our citizens?
This, this savings on this is more on the commercial retail side. We are working with garages and tire service companies. This is at that level, still at the residential level. We still have one of the small ones up there that do the small tires for the automobiles, but these are the big truck tires that have to be cut and wheeled down. Yes.
Okay, I'm with Tim on that one because I have no problem at all giving my, my support to this, but I do think that it's proper that we look at helping, I've had several citizens ask about the tire rate and the cost to get rid of their tires and they really want to do the, the right thing. So if we could offer some sort of a discount, I don't know how you do that, I don't want to get into that tonight, but I do think that we need to look at that.
Well, it keeps them from going over the hill.
Yes.
And Madam Chair, we're actually talking with the, the retailers and we've got a company that's going to pick, is trying to work out a partnership with the tire companies and the auto shops to where they pay him to pick them up. So that way they stay out of, of the, when you take one out, if you go have your tires changed, he picks them up and he'll come in and shred them and, and, and the retailer will pay for that cost per tire. So now, if you take them off yourself, that would be only time it'd be applicable, but our bigger service centers or, or automobiles, our retailers, our tire services, we're going to be working with them to be able to pick these up and have them district. JJ is looking at contracting with services and he's got a many of them already under his umbrella already.
Most of the tire companies charge a fee for disposal of tires.
Yes, they do. And what he's going to do, he's going to charge them that same fee to pick it up and he can make it on volume because he's picking up all those tires and we'll be able to convey that.
Well, I think they got a great ideal as far as the residential side. You know, we have that, one a year, we have that trash day or where people can bring their old laptops, computers and stuff and throw them away. I mean, I don't know why we couldn't have like a tire day and have a dumpster sitting there for the same opportunity for residential people just to, to get them there and bring them out here and unload them and, and we'll just take them down and process them.
I mean, we'll include that, we'll include that in it.
Have a tire day.
Well, I think we need to go to two times a year instead of just one. For that fact, why couldn't you have a dumpster sitting here?
That's what I'm saying.
I mean, constantly, just one day or two days a week, month.
Okay, I know we have a motion on the floor and we're discussing, so let's stay on topic, but I, I do want to point out that, that didn't, somewhere we have a, a conversation about a dumpster, a free dumpster to a community.
Yes.
Yearly.
And we're in the process of buying those additional ones. There are actually, they're, they're coming in now, so, I mean, and yeah.
Okay.
Now, are those going to be solely for tires?
Well, now, that's, that's one of the problems.
They're gonna have another site, another trash site.
I will have another trash site, but also you can't mix the tires with the regular household trash because then I've got to take it to the floor and separate it, which is handling too much. It's easier to, after we look at the tire services, look at the residential, what comes across the waste station, the scales on a residential for the tires, we can look at that, maybe setting, you know, one outside, that way they can just, just, just come, we're trying to get a handle on it because all of them's got so backed up on the industrial side.
Well, what about this free dumpster per community? This is the first I've heard about it. When did we, did we talk about that? Did I just miss something?
We talked about buying dumps, extra dumpsters.
And that was the one per community, that the motion? Yes, yes. No, an extra dump, no.
Yeah, see, I, I thought you were just gonna say, you.
No.
No.
I'm against that.
This is like cleanup day.
Yes.
Like Earth Day, cleanup day, when communities are coming together to clean up their communities and then we don't have a way to get this to the sites, which brought in the tires. And I know we run a rabbit here tonight and I apologize, we still have a motion on the floor, so let me dispense with that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Lester?
She takes the lead. Steve, if you're, it actually started at the same time that Honeaker, we dumped, we put dumpsters at Honeaker in each one of the communities. We just drop them off, they get two or three days to be able to dump into it, clean up their neighborhoods. We come and pull and dump it for them. Yes. Okay, that last thing on the county administrator request is Russell County, I'm sorry, let me back up. Next on it is the travel request for the commissioner of revenue, the library and emergency management travel request.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for travel request. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Last one is the, on the county administrator request is the Russell County Planning Commission plat. This is a request from the planning commission for the lots one through six being combined in the Banner Heights subdivision. I need approval on the, on the planning commission plats.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to take care of the planning commission plats for the banner addition down in, I think, the Castlewood Magisterial District. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, that concludes the county administrator reports and requests.
Very good. At this time, I'm going to ask for a board member discussion and reminders. I'll start with Mr. Lovelace.
I'm good, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Ray?
Yes, I've been, a lot of people have been contacting me about they can't get their household, I mean, not their household trash, but their like building materials and stuff down there because they don't, like, work in Monday through Friday and they're just wanting us to check and see if we could open up like a half day on Saturday, close on Sunday and Monday. So they've just been asking, so I'm just asking to check that out, see what we can do there.
And again, back to the Waste Management Authority, that, that's under their autonomy on the landfill, so we would have to, you guys sit on the board, so, so this, it's, it's hard. So let us go with that request to the Waste Management Authority.
Mr. Eaton?
Yeah, I just have one thing. I would like to thank Maxine and this is a great book. We have people in our county that have really committed their life to public service. I don't want to take it for granted, but this book was published, it's called Johnny the Ambulance. It's in, I guess, I don't know if one will say memory or whatever to her husband, but dedication. Thank you. And I want everybody that gets an opportunity to get a book and read it and to purchase one, this is, it's just amazing. And I admire them for taking this step to do this and I just wanted to actually give them some kudos for this and, and thank, thank you, Maxine.
Mr. Breeding?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Dye?
Just a couple things I wanted to say. Thanks to PSA for finishing up the water project all the way to the county line and to thank Point Broadband, they are bringing it through Green Valley, Corn Valley and through Elk Gardens. So we're moving right along. Thanks.
Mr. Christian?
She talking about finishing up the water line. I was asked to bring before the board, at the request of putting a tank, water tank up in that area, because they said what, the ones that's on public water, they have such a low pressure, they was hoping to get a tank located in that area.
You're PSA member, oh, you're at large, so we'll just put that out as a public service announcement tonight here that we need to think about that and our PSA folks can think about that.
And I have the person to approach me that they drive, plan that they, oh, would.
That'll, that'll all be controlled, but that'll, you'll have to do hydraulic analysis, make sure that, because once you put a tank in, it affects the entire system.
We're sending it to the PSA, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, at your request.
Since it came up, I thought I thought it in, it can be taken down. They know the hydraulics, Steve, but if it's going to be on the high. It can be too high and you'll end up with pressure producers in some areas. They've got a program, they've got a program, they can plug it in there and whip. It needs to be done with PSA.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Anything else?
I have you.
Okay, and I have nothing further that I, I need to comment on, but thank everybody for coming. I'm pleased that, I want to say one more thing about Ms. Velma House. It's Velma House Week and Wednesday is her big day, so we appreciate citizens like